I'd like to call the October meeting of the Kernville Planning Board to order. One point of note for the board members and those who are out waiting to talk or watching on the Internet. For all public hearings we have tonight, there will be no final conclusion. The board will meet again Wednesday night to take the final vote, and that's part of the rules and law of virtual meetings. So I'd like to call on Jeff to talk about the presentation of format for a remote meeting.
Yeah, so the people who are watching, of course, here on YouTube right now, if you wish to speak, we would call 336-996-7289. And Matthias with their ID, IT department would put you through. So the format of the meeting will be, staff will make a presentation. Chair will ask anybody wishes to speak for or against. If you do, you would call 336-996-7289. Thank you.
Okay, as we have been in the past, let's do our roll call vote. Margaret Burks.
Here.
Diane Byers.
Here.
Luanne Davis.
Here.
Jim Frattonburg.
Here.
Steve Hutchins. Steve Hutchins. Did you respond, Steve, or were we? Tom, Steve's here. Tom McDaniel. Chris Oakman. Joe Orinstain.
I'm here.
And Jim Waddell is here. So next to our business is approval of minutes.
I'm here, too.
Sorry.
I'm here, too.
Minutes for the September fourteenth Planning Board meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move for the approval as presented.
Of approval by Margaret.
Second.
Second by Steve. And any other questions? All those in favor of process, we've got to do a roll call. Margaret Burks.
Yes.
Diane Byers.
Yes.
Luanne Davis.
Yes.
Jim Frattonburg.
Yes.
Steve Hutchins.
Yes.
Tom McDaniel.
Yes.
Chris Oakman.
Yes.
Joe Orinstain.
Yes.
And Jim Waddell is a yes. Next item is the approval of minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Board continuing meeting. Pleasure to the board.
I move for the approval as presented.
A motion for approval by Margaret.
I'll second it. Frattonburg.
Okay, Jim Frattonburg is second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take roll call. Margaret Burks.
Yes.
Diane Byers.
Yes.
Luanne Davis.
Yes.
Jim Frattonburg.
Yes.
Steve Hutchins.
Yes.
Tom McDaniel.
Yes.
Chris Oakman.
Yes.
Joe Orinstain.
Yes.
And Jim Waddell is a yes. The next item are our public sessions. We have a final development plan. Jeff Watson, agent for others. For a final development plan, approval of a site plan titled Starbucks Union Cross Out parcel in the MU dash S two-phase zoning district for property located at fourteen seventy-six Jag Branch Boulevard, being all append number six eight seven four dash three nine dash two six oh five point zero zero, containing one point seven five plus or minus acres. Petitioners requesting approval of the second phase of a two-phase special use district zoning petition. Requested uses a restaurant with drive-through service for specialty food and beverage shops. This is zoning docket K seven one nine FDP TR three.
Thank you, Chairman Waddell. I'm going to shift over to my screen share.
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Michelle's getting ready.
We're here. So the property in this case is located on a one point seven five acre site at one four seven six Jag Branch Boulevard and is surrounded by M U S zoning. The applicant is proposing the construction of a Starbucks establishment, which is termed in the Unified Development Ordinance as Restaurant with Drive-Thru Service. During the rezoning of the larger Smith Crossing development, a conditional use was added, Restaurant with Drive-Thru Service for Specialty Food and Beverage Shops. This proposal falls under the latter. So the proposed building footprint here is twenty-five hundred square feet, and the request is for a maximum building height of one story. The road access to this site and future adjacent out parcels is already in place. The site plan indicates two driveway entrances, allowing full movement from both, both from Jag Branch Boulevard. The highway corridor overlay requires that building facades be seventy-five percent brick. The developer has submitted the building design shown here as a conceptual rendering. At the time of building permits of middle, the highway corridor overlay building design standards shall be met. Staff recommends approval of the site plan and conditions as presented in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff right at this point? Do we have anybody online which would wish to make a comment? Apparently not. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Jim, I think we do have somebody online.
We do, okay. If you'll state an address for the record, please.
Is that the right one? PSFJ, go home. The PHJ. I'm going to make sure you're following along. We're on politics this night. So, yeah. Hey, Christian, you're on. Hello, Christian, are you there?
Yes. State your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
You can also do Jeff Watson. All right. Jeff, you there?
Yes, sir. I can hear y'all.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead, state your name and record, name and address for the record.
Okay. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Jeff Watson, five six eight Jotun Street, Suite two hundred, Davidson, North Carolina, two eight zero three six.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Thank you for your time tonight, and we appreciate the opportunity to bring forth a great development here for the town of Turnsville. I mean, if you have any questions, I don't have anything immediate to say. Other than we've been a business since ninety-seven, we're, you know, preferred developer for Starbucks and have, you know, plenty of experience over the years developing fast food restaurants just like this, as well as other grocery anchor shopping centers and drugstores. And as it relates, I guess the only one thing I did want to point out as far as the two access points, we're actually installing a second access point, you know, as you can see on this driveway that would be for future connection for other retailers or office buildings or so forth that, or for future development. So we'd be sharing access with any future developments as well in this, in this Smith Corners development, which I think is an added benefit to future, you know, retailers there.
You're right. Okay. Okay, any questions of Mr. Watson at this point? Thank you, Mr. Watson. We appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you as well. Appreciate it.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the conditions presented by the staff.
We have a motion for approval by Steve.
Chris Oakman seconds.
Second by Chris. Any further discussion? Okay, Margaret Burks.
Yes, I approve.
Diane Byers.
I approve.
Luanne Davis.
I approve.
Jim Frattonburg.
Approve.
Steve Hutchins.
Approve.
Tom McDaniel. Chris Oakman.
Approve.
Joe Orinstain.
Approve.
And Jim Waddell is an approve. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, Mr. Watson. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public hearings, and once again, there will be no final decision made tonight. We'll meet again on Wednesday night to have the final decisions. First public hearing is a rezoning. Ray Thomas, attorney for owners. Petitioners request a one and two-phase special use district rezoning from RS twenty and HB dash S to LB dash S Limited Business Special Use District for properties located at ten twenty North Main Street, containing a total of thirteen point zero three plus or minus acres and being all append numbers as listed in the staff report under Phase One and Phase Two. All the uses requested are also listed in the staff meeting, in the staff report for each phase. This is zoning docket K seven eight four.
Thank you, Chairman Waddell. I'll share my screen. As the chairman described, this is a special use district rezoning. It's a single phase and a two-phase for limited business. Single phase is where they show a specific site plan and use. Two phases when they propose uses, and we'll come back later for final development plans in front of the planning board. The site plan is described as a single phase, nine point four acre site, showing a proposed grocery store at thirty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-nine square feet, one hundred eighty-one parking spaces. Second phase shows one, shows three out parcels. You could potentially combine out parcel one and two. The site sits at the intersection of the new Macy Grove Extension, which opened on Friday, which hooks up to North Main Street. And to the north is County Line Road. So to the south is the Macy Grove Extension. To the west is North Main Street, and to the north is County Line Road. To the rear is residential properties. To address the adjacent property owner concerns and meet the special use district standards that the Board of Alderman applied to a grocery store next to a residential area in earlier case, Beast and Cross Road, where the current Walmart grocery store is. Staff is recommending similar conditions. The buffer longer residential, a fifteen foot type-three buffer shall be required along the eastern property line. The planting design shall include deciduous trees planted fifty-foot out center, evergreens planted five point five on center, and supplemental shrubs will be planted linear line in the buffer. The buffer shell contain a six-foot berm. Planting shall be placed on top of the berm. The height of the berm should be measured from the development side. An alternative to the berm shall be an eight-foot opaque brick wall. These are similar conditions as the Beast and Crossroads project. The buffer yard shall be maintained and not be allowed to naturalize. This was an additional condition placed by the Board of Alderman during his here, the earlier hearing. No tractor-trailer delivery shall take place before six AM or after ten PM to the rear lower area of the grocery store, except during periods electrical power outage to the site, at which time the delivery time restrictions will be lifted until power is restored. Regarding lighting, lighting for the projects will be designed to dissipate at the roof line. Pedestrian scale lighting will be, will illuminate such that the light dissipates at the roof lines of the buildings. Pole height shall be a maximum of twenty-five feet. Security lights for the buildings shall be shield-type with no wall pack allowed. Wall pack being like a hundred and eighty degrees into the sky all around. Further on the site plan, just for a little more emphasis on the need for this buffer, the current site has two berms along the Macy Grove Road access, partially behind the grocery store. The primary adverse impact area is the tractor-trailer dock area, which does not have a berm to buffer the noise and visual impacts. So to the right is an illustration of the grocery store and that concrete area for the tractor-trailer area. The grocery store finished floor elevation is nine ninety-four, nearly ten feet higher than the adjacent residential property. Long tractor-trailer area, there is a retaining wall, which implies a developer plans to place some of the proposed buffer yard planning at the base of the retaining wall, providing no screening of the tractor-trailer area. Regarding uses, the single-phase portion rezoning calls for a grocery store, which is under U D O, is listed as food and drugstore. Since the site plan shows the one building as a grocery store, staff is recommending remaining uses be denied. So here's a full list of uses with strikeouts. They were recommending food and drugstore as described under site plan. Regarding the two-phase, two-phase rezoning has the following uses requested. Staff is recommending denial of shopping center because shopping centers defined as all the uses permitted in an applicable zoning district. Staff is also recommending denial of church or religious institution, community, because the site cannot accommodate a church with over six hundred attendants. That type of church is a very large church, and courses, small out parcels couldn't accommodate such a use. So staff is recommending approval of the uses submitted with the deletion of shopping center and church or religious institution, community. Regarding the land use plan, in two thousand seventeen, the town of Turnsville completed a study and plan for the area that would be impacted by the Macy Grove Extension from Salem Parkway, Business Forty to North Main Street. So anticipation of this road opening, we knew that we would see some development pressures. To accomplish the Turnsville Development Plan goal of establishing Turnsville as a unique high-quality community within a triad, the adopted plan for this proposed site requires design to incorporate proper building mass, rhythm, scale that transitions into the adjacent land uses. The Turnsville Land Use Plan with a parcel along North Main Street, north and Smith Edward Road, Macy Grove Extension to County Line was changed from low-density residential to commercial neighborhood. The adopted plan states, states, "Commercial neighborhood shall consist of small-scale commercial services with a maximum retail store size being twenty thousand square feet or less, and also offices." Further, it states, "The commercial neighborhood development shall meet the current zoning objective for approved neighborhood commercial development in the northeast corner of North Main Street and County Line Road to create a village setting with buildings fronting the primary streets and meeting essential Turnsville overlay district standards along with a network of sidewalks." So regarding the conformance to the plan, the current proposed zoning would not conform to the Turnsville Development Plan based upon the following two facts. First fact, the building size, the single-phase rezoning proposes a thirty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-nine square foot grocery store. Turnsville Development Plan calls for small-scale commercial services with a maximum retail store size being twenty thousand square feet or less. The purpose of the small-scale commercial is to prevent deterioration of blighted conditions of the existing North Main Street commercial area. Turnsville has had a successful record in concentrating commercial to pockets, which is a system preventing vacant storefronts. The abandon, abandonment of the Piney Grove Low Food Stores, one example of town not achieving the goal of preventing vacancies. At the time of the South Main, South Main Street Low's Food Grocery Store rezoning, staff was informed Low's Foods would be renovating the Piney Grove and the Walker Town Low's Food Stores. Staff would not have recommended rezoning approval of the South Main Street Low's with the knowledge that a Low's Food would be abandoned, the Piney Grove store. But also, it should also be noted, it should also be pointed out, the old Rite Aid is still remains vacant. If the proposed grocery store and commercial out parcels are approved, it would adversely impact existing North Main Street commercial area by promoting additional vacancies and making it more difficult to lease existing vacant space. The land use plan calls for promoting orderly growth, which requires consideration of the entire area, meaning the entire area of North Main Street and not just an individual location. Grocery stores are typically anchors for commercial centers. Commercial centers without anchors have a difficult time attracting other commercial uses. Over time, the lack of occupancy and maintenance results in blighted conditions and economic decline for the area. The abandoned Low's Grocery Store is an example of described situation. Staff is currently working to address graffiti and deterioration of the Piney Grove Low's building. Further, how we're not conform to the Turnsville Development Plan, Land Use Plan. As stated, the second fact is, the site plan, the proposed grocery store and three out parcels follow a generic commercial strip design. Turnsville Development Plan, Land Use Plan calls for creating a village settings with buildings fronting the primary streets and meeting the central Turnsville overlay district standards, along with a network of sidewalks. Staff is recommending a similar rezoning condition as case K six seventy-eight located across County Line Road to the north. Just north of this site, County Line Road and North Main Street. Rezoning conditions for that site include a detailed site plan, see to the right, and conditions. The conditions include a layout created in a small village setting, with the buildings pulled up to the street, double-fronted buildings, pedestrian walkways, forty percent open space, detailed materials, and requirement to meet the central Turnsville overlay standards. So here's an illustration of the rezoning approved north of County Line Road. To the south would be an alternative layout with the chat, with the dark boxes representing the grocery store and four potential buildings in the more village setting, meeting the land use plan and also the plan already approved north of County Line Road. Here's an illustration of a Harris Teeter in North Mecklenburg using this village setting type operation or layout design. Regarding stormwater, there's two detention devices, one up in the northwest corner by County Line Road and North Main Street, and one along New Macy Grove Extension, both flowing towards the, towards North Main Street. Regarding transportation, condition, this is, it is conditioned that right and left turn lanes of County Line Road be designed and constructed with N C D O T review and approval. Right in and right out with deceleration lanes of North Main Street and Macy Grove, designed and constructed with N C D O T review and approval. So the recommendation of the staff, rezoning, deny the, deny, denial with the following motion. Move to deny the request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance of the town by rezoning a property in case K seven eight four from RS twenty and HBS to LBS. The said rezoning being inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan, the Turnsville Development Plan, and further being both not reasonable nor in the public interest due to the following facts. Proposal is not in conformance of the town, Turnsville Development Plan, Land Use Plan, which calls for this commercial, calls for this commercial neighborhood to be small-scale commercial services with a maximum retail store size being twenty thousand square feet or less, and also offices. Proposed site plan does not meet the commercial neighborhood development design elements to create a village setting with the buildings fronting the primary streets. Further, the Turnsville Development Plan, Land Use Plan calls for promoting orderly growth, which requires consideration of the entire area, not just individual location. If the proposed grocery store and commercial out parcels are approved, it would adversely impact existing North Main Street commercial area by promoting additional vacancies, blight, and making it more difficult to lease existing vacant spaces. Regarding the site plan, staff is recommending, if the rezoning is approved by the Board of Alderman, the conditions as presented in the staff report would be adopted. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Jeff, just a quick question. What's the average size of a grocery store in Turnsville?
Average size, thirty-nine thousand is a smaller footprint. You know, most, most grocery stores are probably in the forty, forty thousand plus range. But, you know, some grocery stores go, go with a smaller footprint. This, this one is, is, could be an average if you took all our grocery stores on average.
Is, is it practical to think a grocery store would move into a twenty thousand square foot move?
Let me adjust my screen here. I lost my screenshot here. No, that, the reason why, when we did the land use plan out there, we specifically made it twenty thousand or less so it would not be a grocery store. So it's purposeful of using a twenty thousand square foot or less to prevent a grocery store going on this corner.
Just on this corner?
In this area where the Macy Grove Extension hit North Main Street. So we did a specific area plan for this area, including across the street and so forth. But yeah, so it was, the land use plan specifically was adopted back in two thousand seventeen to prevent a grocery store at this end of North Main Street because of knowing that if, and when you drive through many cities around the country in commercial strips, you'll see abandoned, deteriorating commercial areas because the cities have improperly planned and land planned out and put more commercial further out. Peters Creek Parkway is a good example, probably in Winston.
Because that's the one thing that people living up North Main Street keep asking me, when we're going to get a grocery store on this side of town? So that's the only reason I was asking.
I was under the impression that, well, I know I had heard one time that Rite Aid was actually another competitor is actually paying rent for that building to keep it vacant. Is that the same with the Low's Building?
Yes, the Rite Aid is owned by Wal, Walgreens. And Walgreens lease is soon up, and so we hopefully will see some new tenants in the old Rite Aid building and Low's, Home and Low's Grocery Stores also, staff understanding Low still has the lease on that building.
Okay.
And so that's why they're vacant is they're, the lease is being paid, and they choose not to put anything in there.
Correct, but if you approved another grocery store further out, the likelihood of another store moving out, you're just going to escalate the issue.
No. Okay, any other questions to staff? Okay, do we have anybody on line? If so, I'll declare the public hearing open.
We have.
We have anybody speak in favor of the petition?
We have Ray Thomas on the line.
Okay.
I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ray. Go ahead.
This is all strange to me. Um.
Ray, state your name and address just for the record, if you would, please.
Add two. Raymond D. Thomas, one sixteen C South Cherry Street, Kernville, North Carolina, two seven two eight four. And I represent the owners as well as the developer for this particular property. One of the things that I would point out that, starting last year and, and ongoing, we are in some very strange times. And these strange times affect what's being built, where it's being built, and lots of businesses. But generally speaking, grocery stores have come through this type of situation. People have to eat, and they go to grocery stores to buy food. One of the things, and I think you need to think about this, because this plan for this particular area, and it is noted, if you look at the maps, it is bait, the, the. it is bait, the, the neighborhood commercial, if you will, is sort of limited to two tracts of land in this area, one on the north side of County Line and of course, on the east side of North Main and this property on the north side of Macy Grove Road and the south side of County Line Road and the east side of North Main Street. So if we're talking about a specific area and and that's what it is, just for this in this general area. Pardon? Okay. There were two things mentioned about Rite Aid and the old Lowe's store, and I believe the comments that were made were pretty well true. You have owners who have their own reasons for not renting that property. And I, I just happened to look out of curiosities today. The, all the taxes on the property at Lowe's have been paid and those taxes are sixty eight thousand, forty four dollars and seventy seven cents. So that's a lot of money somebody's paying, man, but they're all current except for twenty twenty. And the Rite Aid is paying thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and for and they're current except for twenty twenty. Thought that would be interesting to note. In the present area, in looking at the plan and looking at what was recommended by the town of Kernsville to rezone and what district to be in. It was recommended, there were two or three, but one, limited business. The property to the north of County Line Road is limited business, special use. And we have asked for the same zoning special use. And the town of Kernsville states of the limited business district is primarily intended to accommodate moderately intense neighborhood shopping and services centers close to residential areas. The district is established to provide locations of business which serve nearby neighborhoods, including smaller businesses, locations up to ten acres in size in rural areas. And this seems to fit our area that we're in. And note that it, I think the total size of the plat or for the property is nine point four acres. So it seems to fit. So I think you should take a look at that. And it was, it's noted that the property to the north that was rezoned, rezoned in two thousand seven, five point eight acres. And about the only thing that's been done with that property is for a for sale sign to be on it. Nothing has been done and there could be a reason for that. And I think part of that reason is the inability of some kind of anchor to any kind of business development. Obviously, a grocery store would be an anchor. Something that I just found out about involved in a matter involving the D O T and some owners on the other side of North Main Street, actually from this property. And in talking with their representatives, I found out that from North Main Street, where Macy Grove Road starts to Pine Grove Road. And I believe it's coming in somewhere around Linville Springs Road and in that area. There will be no access for anybody. There will be nothing. It'll just be a road and if they'll either buy your property and if you can't access it, you just have to deal with the D O T on that. But there is no access. So there, if you had any type of business or anything other than residential or what you've got now, you're not going to be able to get to it off of Macy Grove Road. As to people in that area, as Jim Waddell said, they keep saying, when are we going to get a grocery store or certain types of business? They don't, there is nothing. These folks either go to Oak Ridge or they go on the south side, generally on the south side Business Forty, although there are some grocery stores and that type of, of business just on the north side of Business Forty, but they have to go through town. And one of the things that I hear from many people in town, they talk about the traffic. Well, the part of the traffic is that those folks that live on the north side of town going toward Oak Ridge, they've got limited places they can go. And so if they go south, that's traffic through the middle of town or down South Cherry Street. So I think that is a consideration. As to the uses, we are in agreement with the staff as to the special use, one phase, they talked about grocery store, retail, drugstore, that's fine with us. And then the elimination of shopping center and church on the other is also agreeable. It is just our opinion. I think sometimes this vacant building is overplayed. And I think about the, the economic situations we're in, but if you look at going up North Main Street, except for the, the Lowe's building and the buy right, those are the two biggest, not the buy right, but the Rite Aid. Everything else, houses that have are being zoned or have been zoned, some type of business are available in full. In fact, even up north Maine, there's at least one insurance company that built a new building about two, three years ago. So it's that reason to me is something that you can put some weight to it, but it shouldn't be your only thing that you consider. And zoning sometimes also meets the needs of people. And that area that we're talking about, County Line Road on up North Main Street into Guilford County, it is developing and it is developing quickly. And there are a lot of residents, residential areas that where people live and they're looking for a service, just like I read you about limited business. And this is, this is not a large area, nine acres, nine point four acres is large enough, but you can only put just so much. And but it's the type of area that the services that people need can be put there. And one of them, in my view, is going to be a grocery store of some type. So far as the site plan is concerned, we feel that this is the, the village concept, as Jeff has indicated. This whole thing was done to limit, to limit what you could have. Well, it and, and you know, it's interesting to note, and he's, he's telling us, I think, as it is, that the this is the size is the average of a, a grocery store in this community anyway. And in most places where you go, that's what you're going to see. So it is our opinion that to fulfill the needs of the people in that community who have expressed their wants and desires, that this piece of property, and it's, it's pretty specific, is a good place for this type of development. If you have any questions, I'll try to, try to answer them.
You're muted, Jim.
I want to ask. This is Margaret Burks. I want to ask. I want to ask Jeff what he visualized going there.
What I vision going there?
How you visualize going there? What do you want to go there?
Well, I mean, grocery store would work. The problem is with the land use plan and with this development, it doesn't meet that. Doesn't meet the village concept and the, the buildings are too big. Restaurants could go, you know, there's a lot of things that that people want up North Main Street because some people go over to Walker Town to go to the grocery store too. And there is a grocery store up North Main Street, food lines there. It's just not way up North Main Street.
This is Diane. I, I agree with you, Jim. And the other thing is, even though there's a food line there, the size of that food line, especially when we've been in this pandemic problem, having a small grocery store and just that one small grocery store, that store's full all the time. And I don't like to go in it because it is full all the time. The parking lot's full every time I walk, I drive by there. And Lowe's used to have lots of customers and I'm, I just can't understand why they didn't leave a store over there for this side of town. But that's my opinion for.
Yeah, I think they were in competition with each other if you did that. Most of the business from Lowe's went to food line.
And then as Ray has said, there is a lot of building. We just, you know, we just looked at that development that was going on the other side of that Macy Grove extension that we discussed that was just outside of city limits a few meetings back. So.
Okay, any, any other questions to Ray? Okay, do we have anybody online which is speaking opposition to the petition?
There's no one else to speak on public hearing A.
Okay. Okay, then, then we'll again take final action on this, on this one Wednesday night.
Is that on TV also?
Yes, it'll be on TV. Tony Alford, agent owner for property located at five twelve Pine View Court and one oh nine English Street, being all pin numbers, six eight eight six dash four two dash eight six three five dot zero zero and six eight eight six dash four two dash eight eight one two dot zero zero, containing one point seven one plus or minus acres. Petitioner requests a single phase rezoning from R M eighteen and G B to P B dash S pedestrian business special use district. Requested uses are art and craft studios, banking and financial services, offices miscellaneous residential, building urban professional office, retail store specialty or miscellaneous. This is zoning document K six six dash eight one.
I'm going to share my screen. All right, the property in this case is a one point seven one acre site located at five twelve Pine View Court in the R M eighteen and G B zoning districts. The site is surrounded by properties zoned R M eighteen, P B S, G B, G O S, the general office special use and G B, G B S, general business special use. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to allow a mixed use development that would include a residential apartment building and a mixture of other complementary uses as listed here and within the staff report. This site was previously approved for a mixed use development comprised of apartment units with a retail storage facility on the first floor. The current rezoning requests a four story building with approximately twenty five hundred square feet of commercial on the first floor and sixty five residential rental units on upper floors. The pedestrian business zoning district allows for a thirty percent reduction in parking spaces, which would make the requirement here seventy five spaces. The site plan shows one hundred and two parking spaces and states that parking will be assigned to units to assure adequate parking. Site access is proposed from Pine View Court as well as Harmon Lane. The land use plan indicates mixed use development for the site. In this case, the residential component would complement the commercial and mixed use areas. The walkability of the area would allow residents convenient access to the surrounding retail offices, restaurants, the public library and the downtown area. The site is located in the highway corridor overlay district and the central Kernsville overlay district. In this case, the more stringent standards apply. The proposed building elevation provides a transitional design style between the N C sixty six corridor and the historic downtown area. The building material would be brick with a stone veneer accent and balconies would include metal railings. Staff recommends approval of the following motion, site plan and conditions as presented in the staff report. Move to amend the zoning ordinances of the town by rezoning the property in case K six 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 dot eight one from R M eighteen and G B to P B S pedestrian business special use district. The said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and further being both reasonable and in the public interest due to the following facts. The petitioner requested a special use district rezoning, allowing building architectural standards to be applied. This assures the development addresses the development plan goal of establishing Kernsville as a unique, high quality community within the triad. The petitioner requested special use district rezoning, allowing a specific site plan to be considered to address the unique character of the area. And lastly, there's a demand for multifamily housing to keep pace with the growing employment of the area and the changing demographics. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So this is not senior living. This is just apartment living, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions to staff?
When we previously approved it, how many apartment units were approved at that time?
The previous approval, I believe, was upwards of seventy apartment units. It was, it was more than, than the the sixty five being requested now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that's Chris's question. My, my only concerns about it, and, and I guess we've got two of these tonight, correct? So my only concern is entrance and exit onto sixty six. Are there plans at some point in the future? That's been a challenge for a very really, really long time. Is, are there? Is it too close to the, the other two streetlights to? Is, are there, is it too close to the, the other two streetlights to put a streetlight there, I'm assuming?
Yes, when, um, when Gateway was originally developed and rezoned and we did all the road improvements there, um, we studied a traffic light, but they're too close. Um, in the future, weight change you'll see on sixty six is a median going on preventing, um, that, that turning movement. So, once you're, it, it's similar, remember, um, South Main Street turning onto Century Boulevard? That what we, first of all, they gave them a leftover, then they took the leftover away. Um, eventually we'll see a median placed, um, on NC sixty six.
Are there, are there plans, so a follow-up question then, let me, uh, look, let me get that right. Uh, let me get the right street name. Are there plans to upgrade, uh, English or Davis Street? Uh, quite, quite frankly, when I leave my office and I know I gotta go left on sixty six, uh, and my office is on Pineview Drive, um, I take a left on Harmon and right on English Street so I can come out on the, at the light. Are there any plans to upgrade English or Davis to, to make that a little easier for, for these, these people?
Yeah, currently, um, I've been, I've started contacting public service or the contacting city county utility commission. We really need to do an area plan between Gateway and downtown and really focus on infrastructure, storm water, water sewer, you know, I'm, I'm in the process of working with city county utility commission to find out the age of the water sewer lines. And thirdly, of course, infrastructure, um, is the street widening. Um, with, with Fourth Elm came in, um, you know, they did some street widening and on street parking and Quorum Street, uh, where the old factory is. Quorum Street, that the old factory will eventually, uh, be redeveloped and there's right away there. Um, so we envision, um, as we're seeing in Gateway and Fourth and Elm now with the old church, um, we envision this area between Gateway and downtown, um, to slowly redevelop. But, you know, one of the things I think the community will have to do, the town will have to do is look at that infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, storm water, water sewer.
I, I can see, I can see these people coming out the back entrance into, uh, Pineview Court, cutting through Zaxby's and, and, uh, coming out on English that way through the parking lot. So that, that's my, that's my only, that's my only concern. I think, uh, I think it's definitely a need for the downtown area.
Okay, any other questions to staff? Okay, I'll, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody on line which should speak in favor of the petition?
You have Tony Alfred on the line?
Listen, planning board members, this is Tony Alfred, seventy forty Interlake Drive in Kernersville, North Carolina. And I'm on the, I'm on the call in support of the, the two projects and here to make myself available for any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions to Tony at this point for the board? Okay, thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Anyone online who wish to speak against the petition?
Nobody's on.
Okay. So again, this, we'll take action on this on Wednesday night then.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next item is a rezoning, Tony Alfred, agent owner for property located at five one five Pineview, Pineview Court, being all a pin number six eight eight six dash five two dash one five nine seven dot zero zero containing one point three three plus or minus acres. Petitioner is requesting a single phase rezoning from PBS to PBS business pedestrian business special use district. Requested uses are art craft studios, banking and financial services, offices miscellaneous, residential building, urban restaurant with drive-through, retail store, specialty of miscellaneous, and this is only docket K six seven three dot A one.
Uh, thank you Chairman Waddell. Um, as described, um, and discussed earlier, this is similar to the project we just looked at. Uh, just want to make a note that staff has recommended an additional, uh, used professional offices would, would also be added to the proposed uses. The purpose of this rezoning, uh, the rezoning purpose is, is a mixed use development that would redevelop the old High Point Bank parcel. The primary use would be multifamily residential units to bring more which would assist in bringing more residents into the downtown area and further assist in redeveloping the area between Main Street and Gateway Center. High Point Bank received rezoning approval in two thousand seven, two thousand sixteen. B and C purchased High Point Bank. Due to the small office area, the bank site was closed and operations were consolidated at the B and C Board's Broad Street Bank building. Um, I was always curious, um, you know, High Point Bank had, has a nice site, but they closed that operation basically due to the smaller size and open air type bank, um, providing less office area. Since then, the old High Point Bank has remained empty. Banks like the retail industry have been moving away from storefronts to online operations, which makes this bank site somewhat obsolete. You know, there's always potential, another bank would be interested in the site. Um, this rezoning would give this site another option. Of course, COVID nineteen recession has also reduced the potential for redevelopment of the site to a restaurant or office. On the site plan, we're sorry, building, commercial, and this one is sixteen hundred forty-two fifty-three residents, density about the same as the previous one, thirty-nine point nine units per acre. Similar to the other one, parking will be assigned and amenities include an elevator, club room, exercise room, storage space, business center, dog wash area, and office rentals. Staff has recommended in the condition closing the middle access on Pineview Court. So they would have two accesses off Pineview Court. We recommend removing the middle, um, the engineer had no objections to removing that. Same building design, if they came, came in for construction, it would be primarily brick with a rock element, accent element, uh, metal rails. The overlay modifications as described by Rochelle, basically a transition between the sixty-six corridor and historic downtown. So the building would contain some historic elements, but also have a more contemporary look. So it's kind of a blend of the highway corridor and essential Kernersville overlay area. Regarding the street yard, High Point Bank had a, uh, street yard modification with walls in the parking. So these brick walls still would remain, um, for the street yard, um, for reduction to a ten foot street yard. Also should be noticed, notice that the, there is a tax amendment tonight, um, to remove the buffer yard requirement between this building and Zaxby's and just make it a landscaped street yard area as shown in area in green. So later tonight we'll have K two forty-seven proposing that green area, um, not be a buffer, but instead of a street yard area, uh, with a street yard plantings. And the land use plan to propose mixed use project is, is in a transition area of commercial office, industrial mixed uses. Residential component will complement the commercial and mixed use areas. Walk and build area would allow residents, uh, access to the surrounding retail office, restaurants, library in the downtown area. Recommendation is rezoning, move to amend the zoning ordinance, the town, the rezoning property case K six seven three amendment one from PBS to BBS. The said rezoning be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and further be both reasonable to public interest because the petitioner requests a special use district rezoning allowing building architectural standards to be applied. This assures development addresses development goal of establishing Kernersville as a unique high quality community within the triad. Secondly, the petitioner requests special use district rezoning allowing a specific site plan to be considered to address a unique character of the area. Thirdly, there's a demand for multifamily housing to keep pace with the growing employment of the area and a change in demographics. Regarding site plan, site plan approval and conditions as presented in the staff report.
Okay, Jeff, that conceptual drawing you had of the building, is that the side of place sixty-six?
Yeah, the south side would be facing, yes, it'd be sixty-six and that same type of design carries through the front. A combination of, of, of brick with, the ends would have some rock accent and then the rest would be brick and brickwork and metal railings and that corners, um, decorative corners across the top.
Okay. Any other questions to staff at this point? Okay, if not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Do we have anybody online which would like to speak in favor of the petition?
Tony Alfred's here.
Okay.
Forty, Interlake and Drive in Kernersville. I'm on the call in support of the project and answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any question for us to offer? Okay, thank you, Tony, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, is anybody, anybody else wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Do we have anybody online for opposition to the petition?
Jim, there's no one else on the line for this, uh, agenda item?
Okay, then we'll declare the public hearing closed and we'll do the final vote on it Wednesday night. Next time, next item is a rezoning, Jim Taylor, agent for others, for property located in the eight hundred block of Old Winston Road, being all a pin number six eight seven six dash seven one dash two eight one six, six eight seven six dash seven one dash zero eight one four, six eight seven six dash seven one dash two seven six three, six eight seven six dash seven one dash one seven eight two, six eight seven six dash seven one dash one seven one two, containing one point eight six plus or minus acres. Petitioner is requesting a single phase rezoning from RS twelve to GB dash S general business special use district. He's requested uses are club or lodge, museum or art gallery. This is only docket K seven eighty-five.
Thank you Chairman Waddell. I am sharing my screen. So the property in this case is located on a one point eight six acre lot, um, at Old Winston Road and Holly Tree Drive in the RS twelve zoning district. It's actually a combination of several lots. Um, the site is surrounded by properties zoned RS twelve, RM eight S, which is residential building multifamily special use district, and GBS, general business special use district. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to allow the construction of two buildings for the purpose of storing and displaying classic automobiles and aircraft. The site plan shows access off of Holly Tree Drive, with this access being off of private driveway within a shared public right of way. Staff included several conditions to address adjacent property owner concerns. The U D O requires fifty-four parking spaces for the proposed use. Um, the applicant has requested a modification to the parking standard as the site plan proposes forty-three spaces between the two phases of construction. Um, the petitioner has submitted evidence to staff of research that was undertaken to determine an appropriate amount of parking for this particular use. The results of that research suggest that the draw of visitors is anticipated to come mostly from the triad area and no more than six to eight cars would be parked in the lot at any given time. The developers proposing a ten thousand eight hundred square foot building to be built in the initial construction phase with a second ten thousand eight hundred square foot building to be built in the future. The site is within the highway corridor overlay district with a requirement that the proposed single story buildings will have brick facade and Eiffel Cornices on all sides. Staff recommends approval of the following motion, site plan and conditions as presented in the staff report. Move to amend the zoning ordinances of the town by rezoning the property in case K seven eight five from RS twelve to GPS. The said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and further being both reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed site development helps to maintain Kernersville as a unique high quality community within the triad by contributing to a strong tax base. Um, the highway corridor overlay district includes detailed design standards for the buildings and site plans to assist in implementing the Kernersville development plan goal of establishing Kernersville as a unique high quality community within the triad. Um, and lastly, the land use plan recommends this area for mixed use development to assist in the land use transition between the commercial area of South Main Street and the Hopkins Road residential area. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to staff at this point? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody online which should speak in favor of the petition?
Yes. Uh, my name is Jim Taylor. I live at seven two six Love School Road, Kernersville, North Carolina, two seven two eight four. Uh, long life resident here in Kernersville. Um, and I'm sure any of you folks that know me know of my love for the antique automobile. And my interest here is to try to preserve and keep the automobiles, uh, in this country. I've seen so many of them being sold, going overseas. And for many generations to come to enjoy, uh, these vehicles and to tell the story of, um, of a vehicle that's made such a tremendous impact in the development of this country. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Hey, do we have anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the petition?
There's no one else waiting to speak.
Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And we'll have a final vote on Wednesday night. Next item on our agenda is a text amendment. Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville, for a proposed zoning, zoning text amendment to unify development ordinance to amend chapter C environmental ordinance, article three, watershed pro- protection, this is only docket KT two four four.
I am sharing my screen. Um, during the construction of the Lakewood, Glenstone and Caleb's Creek communities, staff observed development of individual home sites, um, to their maximum allowable or almost their maximum allowable impervious coverage by the original developers. As new homeowners came to development services requesting small additions, patios or expanded driveways, they discovered that limited or no impervious capacity remained for such projects. This text amendment revises and clarifies the impervious coverage allowed by the original developer and reserve some impervious coverage for the sole use of the property owner. Staff recommends approval of the text amendment as written within the staff report and the attached ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions to staff at this point? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone which should speak in favor of the petition?
We have no colors either for or against this petition.
Okay, and anyone which should speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And again, this will be handled on Wednesday night. Next item on our agenda is a text amendment, Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville, for a proposed zoning text amendment to the unified development ordinance, amending chapter A definitions ordinance, article two definitions, chapter B zoning ordinance, article one, purpose and authority, art, article three, other development standards, article six administration and amendments, and chapter D subdivision ordinance. One, general provisions and administration, five major subdivisions. B, development standards and requirements for preliminary subdivision approval. Amendment is proposed in order to comply with the terminology requirements as defined within. Amendment is proposed in order to comply with the terminology requirements as defined within GS one sixty D dash one oh two point seven. This is KT does two forty-five.
Thank you Mayor Waddell, the North Carolina legislators. The North Carolina legislators worked with the North Carolina Bar Association in rewriting one sixty A, which is all the regulations that pertain to planning and development in the state of North Carolina. It's now called one sixty D. This first set of amendments was called part one, there were some miscellaneous amendments before the entire rewrite was done. So staff, let me share my, please the staff drafted the amendments to unify development ordinance that was impacted by one sixty D part one. And as Chairman Waddell pointed out, this pertains to the definition section, zoning section, and the subdivision section. And as described, the text amendments are from the two thousand nineteen North Carolina legislation related to planning and belt regulations. They also include some minor clarifications to clean up on some electronic documents, submittals, and so forth. So staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as presented in the staff report.
Okay, any questions to staff? Do we have anybody online to speak in favor of the petition?
There is no one in favor or against this petition.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and it will be voted on on Wednesday night. Our last item is text amendment, Curtis Swisher, agent for the town of Kernersville for a proposed zoning text amendment to the unified development ordinance, amending chapter B zoning ordinance, article two, zoning districts, official maps and uses, two dash five use conditions, two dash five point six one residential building urban and B buffer yards. This is KT two four seven.
Thank you Chairman Waddell. As described earlier in my staff report for the project at five one five Pineview Court, this is a text amendment that pertains to the condition of a residential building urban. Residential building urban is a permitted use in our U D O. Many uses have some conditions that are tied to it. The residential building urban, for the two cases we heard earlier tonight, had a provision requiring a buffer yard between the the residential and commercial. Staff is recommending that that buffer yard still pertain to pertain to the area where it would be next to an industrial or a major utility. The staff is recommending amendment that would make the landscape area between a commercial area and a residential, being a residential building urban, being a five foot wide landscape area with the street yard planting requirements. So staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as presented in the staff report.
Okay, any questions of staff on the board? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open. We have anybody which would speak in favor of the petition?
There are no callers either for or against.
Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and it will be dealt with on Wednesday night. So again, just to remind everyone online that are watching, all of these tech, all of these public hearings that we've gone through will be voted finally on Wednesday night at six o'clock. Any public comments that anyone's called in just to make in general comments?
Uh, no sir, there are no remaining public comments.
Okay, planning board comments, Margaret?
No. Except, wait a minute. They, my sound system is not as good, or your sound system is not as good tonight as before. I don't know what the problem is.
Yeah, I don't either, but we'll work on it and see. Thank you.
Okay. That's all, I have nothing else.
Diane? She's paused on us. Jim Fratberg?
Yeah, I just have a sort of a general question.
Sure.
When it comes to sort of land use plans and then things that come across our table, you know, later on down the road. I'm trying to get a feel for the, sort of the, how bound we are by decisions made in a land use plan, and if we see things down the road where the plan maybe isn't meeting what the residents in that area maybe need, do we have room to move on that?
Jeff, you want to handle that?
Yes, you know, it's quite common that we'll do a, a land use plan amendment that accompany a rezoning, as you recall, that Brookford residential project, we recommended a land use plan change from low density residential to mixed residential. Now, in this case, like the Macy Grove, North Main Street, County Line Road area, that plan was just completed in two thousand seventeen in anticipation of development coming, and staff anticipated they would probably see a grocery store wanting to go to that site. But during the public, you know, we held community meetings, notified all the property owners out there, came through the planning board, Board of Aldermen. We had no objections to the area plan as, as drafted. So in this case, since we just prepared an area plan, staff, did that feel inappropriate to go back and amend it because nothing has changed?
Well, Jim, from my opinion, if we go through the effort of making the neighborhood plan, yes, we can amend it, but, but we don't want to necessarily amend it just on, based on one project. You understand what I'm saying? Because there's no sense in having the land use plan.
Well, and I, and I understand that, and I understand what you're talking about there, and of course, statements earlier in this meeting where we talked about whether there could ever be a grocery store down there in that area, kind of came across as no based on the land use plan. So thinking in broader terms of that area, that's why, I'm just trying to get a feel for where we stand with this as far as the land use plan goes. Because while I know we don't want to amend it willy nilly, I mean, if we're totally bound by it.
No, we're not.
That could hamstring our decision making, perhaps unnecessarily. So I'm just sort of trying to feel out the process on that deal.
Yeah, Jeff, that land use plan is just for that intersection, right?
Correct, and it's interesting, in the staff report also states that back in the late nineties when we revised our land use plan, it was the first major amendment to our land use plan since it was originally adopted like in early eighties. Originally, North Main Street was, was, land use plan called for the entire length of North Main Street to be commercial. With no guidance or restrictions of what type of commercial. So back in late nineties, early two thousand, our land use plan was amended to shrink our commercial strips to focus and concentrate commercial into clusters. And so when you look at our land use plan, it talks about commercial clusters and to create the synergy. For instance, that's why we never, like Lowe's Home Improvement, there's many developers wanting to keep on going down South Main Street. So back in early two thousand, we purposely amended several commercial strips to make them shorter to concentrate development, to focus development and to redevelopment. And in North Main Street, by focusing that redevelopment, we have seen a lot of conversion of residents into commercial over time. So North Main Street does have a history of once being one giant commercial strip, going back down to a smaller, and now with this new neighborhood, or time, yes, your plans will change with the changing development conditions.
Okay, well, that's very interesting. Those are things I needed to know to think about this one, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Steve Hutchins?
Uh, yeah, I have a quick question about, on Cherry Street, there's a couple of empty lots between, you know, O curse extension and Main on the right going towards Lowe's. They are way overgrown and the growth is covering the curb and gutter. And I wonder who would be policing that?
Yeah, we, we will send notice, we have, in the past, we've had received complaints in that same area, so we'll send out a call enforcement person to correct that.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Tom McGee?
I don't have anything, I'm, I'm gonna lose you though here in a minute because my battery's going dead.
Okay. Chris, you got anything?
No, I'm good tonight.
Joe, you got anything?
Nothing for me tonight, appreciate it.
One question I got, and people keep asking me, what's going in next to Planet Hollywood over there?
A plant, next to Planet Fitness?
A what?
Planet Fitness, South Main Street.
We have a Planet Hollywood?
Planet whatever it is, yeah.
The, the old. The, the old Rite Aid that's adjacent to Smitty's and Planet Fitness, whatever it is. They, they're redeveloping it because Rite Aid was an old fashioned long and narrow store, it's hard to re-lease that, and so they're actually turning it so the front entrances will be on the side facing McDonald's. It'll be up to three entrances, so it might be one, two, or three businesses. They are putting a grease trap in, so there's potential for leasing to a restaurant. So it's just redeveloping that old drugstore site to be, make it more leasable.
Really, what I heard about in the neighborhood program, you know, with, on the internet, on the said it's gonna be another mattress store, so.
That's what we need.
Yeah. Okay, staff updates, Jeff?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's been a, I just want to compliment Rochelle Joseph and Beth Price and Debbie Grant. Some of you may know Debbie, we've been short staffed since beginning of pandemic, and of course, the caseload has been tremendous. We're very pleased to announce there's no cases for November. I know economic wise you want cases, but I think we've, we've got so many cases that I think we're good for a while. And also, I'm adding Adam Hutchins, our IT director, and the coordination he's done, and now Matia Silva. We've been online tonight with a, with our IT. So I really appreciate all the staff, there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff, and we're happy to give everybody a break in November. And looking forward to seeing you guys, six o'clock on Wednesday. Rochelle, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. I'm looking forward to the break as well. I'll miss seeing you guys for one month, but other than that, we'll reconvene.
Okay, anything else to be brought before the board? If not, we stand adjourned. Thanks.